Thank you everyone and welcome to this July meeting of Denpor City Council. It's 5pm on Monday the 25th of July. Council at night and place respects to Tasmania and Aboriginal community as the traditional Aboriginal owners and continuing custodians of this land. All persons in attendance are advised that it's council policy to record council meetings in accordance with council's digital recording policy, the digital recording business meeting will be available to the public on council's website for a minimum period of six months. The meeting will also be live streamed on council's YouTube channel. Item one on the agenda is apologies, so we have an apology for this meeting from council in the morning. Item two is declarations of interest and I'll ask councillors if there are any declarations of interest should be declared at any outcome on the open part of this agenda. We'll move on, thank you. Item three is procedural matters related to the minutes. Item 3.1 is confirmation of their minutes of the meeting during the meeting. Do I have a move?
So move, second.
Councillor Perry and councillor Murphy. Councillor Perry.
We have a procedural mayor.
Thank you councillor.
I confirm councillor Perry, mayor.
Any comments, questions? I'll ask councillor Perry to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Agree against? Motion is carried unanimously. Item 3.2 is public question time and item 3.2.1 are responses to questions raised prior meetings. Do I have a move, please?
So move.
Councillor Murphy, thank you.
Please second.
Um councillor Holst, if you could just comment there. Councillor Murphy, any comment?
Uh they're all detailed there in the agenda, mate.
Thank you councillor Holst.
I'm going to go back.
Thank you, are there any comments, questions? Any other? Councillor Perry, more?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Uh councillor Murphy, close.
Two, close.
Thank you, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Agree against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 3.2.2 is questions without notice from the public. Councillor Perry, councillor Murphy, thank you. Councillor Perry.
Uh answered appropriately, thank you mayor.
Thank you councillor Murphy.
Uh yet again, I concluded councillor Perry.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for the other councillors? I'll ask councillor Perry, close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Agree against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 3.2.3 is questions without notice from the public. Opportunity for members of the gallery to ask questions of council. And I'll ask you to step forward and state your name and address and ask your question, please. Mr Velocott, thank you.
Thank you mayor. Bob Velocott, 11 cock up place, Devonport. Question one, as of this date, the 25th of July 2022, has council made any final decisions at all in regard to the sale of the rate payers' properties? Being the well-established Landscape Parkland on the north-west corner of Fenton Way and Oldacre Street? And the very convenient and well-used CBD Edward Street Car Park and part of Payne Avenue Car Park? What is the situation?
Yeah, through you mayor. As previously advised, council's been through an expression of interest process for those blocks, which is ongoing and there's currently no further updates.
Thank you. Uh question two, I refer to the eyesore left in the former library's nature strip or garden strip situated in Oldacre Street that was left after the removal of the temporary bus station, bus shelter a couple of years ago. When will this section be reinstated and other areas around the property brought back to an acceptable standard expected in a CBD?
I'll take that question. I'm understanding, Mr Velocott. Did you have some question?
Uh thank you. Question three, prior to the 2018 council elections, important financial information that it was, that it was admitted could have influenced the result was, it can be argued purposely withheld from electors and only exposed after the election. Will council give an assurance that there will be no repeat of concealing information before the election this year that would or could influence voters if known at the time of voting?
Um I'm not going to accept that question, Mr Velocott. It casts suspicions on councillors and staff and I won't accept it, thank you.
Thank you.
Was a fact.
Mr Jenny.
Thank you. Hello. My name's Douglas Jenny, 23 Watkinson Street, Devonport. Recently I received my rates notice. Here's open councillors. The amount has increased by 11% since last year and I guess some others have increased more than that. This is a savage increase. What efficiencies has the council introduced for the 2022-23 year?
Uh Mr Vel- Mr Jenny, uh we continue to look for efficiencies within our council and we certainly made it clear before the, the rates were approved that because of the revaluations, most people would have an increase in the value of their property, hence an increase in their rates. But we will certainly always be looking for efficiencies and continued ways to continue to work more efficiently across our council.
An increase in the value of the property should not increase the rates necessarily, thank you.
Mr Jenny.
Just to further clarify, mayor, um so to be clear, council's rates went up 1.9% over the previous year in total. There was a revaluation and that impacted what various rate payers contributed, depending on the ludiance evaluation. Some rate payers may have found, may have found their rates had gone up and others would have found that gone down. But overall, the net take that council had was 1.9% additional. But in regard to Mr Jenny's specific rate notice, I'll be happy to meet with you if you want to come in and let go through.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Jenny.
Mayor, if I may, it'd also be relevant that council's not immune to external cost factors that the rest of the community is in relation to running its business either. So I think that also needs to be considered.
Thank you councillor Murphy. Yes.
Hello, sorry, I couldn't get through the door, it was blocked already.
So we have a policy, you're very welcome to ask a question. I need you to give us your name and your address.
Yep.
And then ask your question.
Excellent. I'm Petra Wildon, 17 Forest Heights Drive. And I have a question because I came across a planning application on the council's website that I'm very concerned about, which is the Mindlet Green Belt. I believe that is just a feature of the suburb. And I'm very concerned about what I'm seeing in that proposal where there's going to be a lot of housing development. So question is, what can we as the public do to kind of make people persuade that the way it looks is, yeah.
So I'm assuming you're talking about a strategy that we've got on our agenda this evening?
Yes, yeah, 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 the Devonfield one, planning application.
Planning application.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If the general manager to respond, there will be opportunity for.
Yeah.
Thanks for your question. The application you're referring to, I think, is the scheme amendment, the rezoning of the Devonfield.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So that was considered by council at its last meeting. And what that means, so council, I guess at that meeting agreed in principle and then put it out for a period of public representation.
Yeah.
And that was 28 days, which I think finished last week or, or has a day or two to go. Very close to finishing. So once, um, once that closes, the council planners will then assess the representations and the comments that have come in. And that will come back to council, to the next council meeting to consider it. And because it is a rezoning, it will then go off to the TAS Planning Commission and they actually make the final decision on whether to approve the change or not. Yeah, there is a, I guess in summary, mayor, there's, there's a formal process that's in place. There's a couple of days to go on the public comment period, but ultimately it will go to the TAS Planning Commission for its, for the final decision.
So is it correct that it's the 2nd of August? Yep?
Yes.
Yes.
Getting a thumbs up from one of us.
What has concerned residents, can we do to try and put our view forward of what we think of that?
Through you mayor, the application will be on council's website and there'll be details there on how you can make a public comment and make a representation.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So just through writing, submission.
Correct.
Yes.
Those submissions will then formally be tabled in a, in a report to the, to the council.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? And I'm sure some of our planning staff would be happy to talk me through the process. If you have a concern, you're on the line and can't find a way through, it is cool. Um, no other questions? Move on. Item 3.2.3 is questions without notice on the upper part there. Questions on notice from councillors is item 3.3 and we don't have any at this stage. And item 3.4, notices of motion, again, there are nothing to discuss. And item 4, training authority matters, again, you have nothing on the agenda for this evening. Item 5 is reports and item 5.1 is the regional recycling collection and processing report and recommendation. Do I have a move, please? Councillor John, thank you. Councillor Ennis, thank you. Councillor John.
Uh yes, uh really pleased to see this coming up, on time coming in. There's been a lot of research. We've been working on this behind scenes for a long time. We certainly take note that it's happening elsewhere and trial and error. And I think the best way we're going forward is we're trying not to have that trial and error, we're trying to see what works, what doesn't, what's going to work for that for this region. And I'm really looking forward to us going ahead with this process. Fogo is very important to us, trying to reduce our waste and that's all I care about. And so this is probably just the next step, getting to the point where in 2023, we should be looking at doing this curbside recycling process. Thank you.
Thank you. Um I would ask members of the Gallery, if you were interested in staying to the council meeting, please, I'll wait quietly. I'd like to discuss this further outside if you have a next conversation. Thank you. You're welcome to come back in.
Thank you.
Councillor Ennis?
Uh thank you. Yes, I strongly support this and I agree that we need to get Fogo over in Devonport and looking forward to that.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Councillor Murphy?
Uh thank you mayor. And it is important to note, Mr Jenny has raised it earlier, that we do have to improve in relation to the costs and going through the process and making sure that we adhere to a fairly stringent or rigid cost analysis in relation to it.
Uh thank you councillor Holst.
Yes, this is a very detailed report. Just a question of the general manager. There was really only Biola that actually put in a conforming, um, sort of subject quote. So we're getting the best bang for our buck. But the other ones really only getting it from one actual company. The others didn't conform from what I can read.
Uh Mr Stone.
Through you mayor. So the attached report steps through the assessment that was undertaken of all submissions. The, the earlier submission was the only conforming tender, but there was an assessment undertaken of the other information provided. It is representing a 2.7% reduction in cost. There are some complications in terms of provision of the beans across different council areas, but, but this has been a competitive process and it's delivered a, you know, a potential cost saving to council for the recyc-, curbside recycling requirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? I'll ask councillor John to close the debate.
Apologies, mayor, I'm having a little bit of computer problems. Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Agree against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.2 is the Denpor Open Space Strategy. For the next 10 years, there is a recommendation.
So move.
Councillor Murphy, thank you. Second, uh?
Counselor Alex.
Councillor Ennis, thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Uh thank you mayor. This is just, we're making this to, to go out to public consultation. It is with some enthusiasm that the processes that we've been through and the changes that we've made in becoming the clever city and providing the opportunity for members of the public to actually make comment is, is very pleasing. So I look forward to what we receive back from the community and as we actually go forward.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis?
Yes, I would say that the process that we've previously been through to get to this stage has been very good. And hopefully when it goes out, we'll get some more additional feedback and be able to move forward.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Councillor Murphy, close.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Agree against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.3, mobile bingo at Lance. Do I have a move, please?
So move.
Councillor Murphy, thank you. Do you have a second, uh?
Second.
Councillor Holst, councillor Murphy.
Uh yes mayor, this is just a review, just to make sure that our current policy remains updated and relevant to the current economic circumstances that we find ourselves in. There has been some representations within that and you can understand it, but I think in reviewing what's now the proposed changes to that, we're more than, more than satisfied anything that's done.
Thank you councillor Holst.
Yes, it's good to see the guidelines updated, that includes a way.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? I'll ask councillor Murphy, close.
Consider it closed, mayor.
Thank you, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Agree against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.4 is sporting event sponsorship. There is a recommendation there, I'll ask councillor, please.
So move.
Councillor Murphy, do you have a second, uh?
Second.
Uh councillor Holst, do you have a question? Councillor Murphy.
Uh thank you mayor. It's quite plain and clear there for everyone to see, although we have had some, some late queries in relation to the Australia Cup round 32 game for the Denpor Strikers Football Club and the, the $10,000 to underwrite their event if it incurs a loss. I think all the other recommendations there will, should be and will be supported and taken into consideration and that how we've been in our, our administering or monitoring of council funds, we've got the money to be able to support these organisations, which only goes to highlighting the strength of the community that we're in. I would have some questions around the rationale and the methodology used in relation to the recommendation of the overriding of the, the $10,000 for Denpor Strikers, but obviously it'll be for everyone else to make a decision around that.
Is there anything you want to comment about this point councillor?
Uh not at this point, I'll, I'll leave the debate open there and, you know, I have that opportunity.
You have an opportunity to close the debate.
Correct.
Thank you. Um, I'll ask a question. Councillor Holst.
Yes, I think it's very important that sponsorship will get to these organisations and brings a lot of tourists into the town, visitors for sporting events. So it's great for the accommodation, the venues. So very worthwhile.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Councillor Alex, you are?
Thanks very much mayor. Yes, I'll be supporting the recommendation. I do realise that the Strikers are hosting a huge game at Valley Road in the following week, so it's not far away. Just want to make note that that, that game is probably the biggest game we're going to probably see of football in Devonport. The team that they're playing against is the team Museum, which is in the area. So you generally see those games played in Launceston or Hova. I think we're fortunate enough to have them in Devonport, so that'd be a great event to host for Devonport. With all the other events that are listed there, I'm in full support of those as well. I think they are a great benefit to the city and to the local economy as well, so I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I'd just like to comment that we do support Denpor Soccer on a range of issues, including the National Schools acquisition phase that can be shown here as a three-year agreement. And we'll be doing some enhanced support as well over the next couple of weeks, ready for that event. And I also, I guess just one comment, this follows on from last month when we talked about MIGs with several community organisations, but aren't supporting organisations, I will continue to support as well. So we have the opportunity to support organisations that volunteer hours and hours of time to support our community and it's really important that we're able to continue to do that. Councillor Murphy?
Oh, I've hit a couple of people.
I'm just putting my light on there, thank you very much. I suppose I'd just like to add to that, that it is wonderful, councillor Alex, you know, we've got this major soccer game coming to Devonport and I'd just suggest everybody get out there and buy a ticket and come along and support it. That's the best way to make sure that these events can happen and that we're supporting these local clubs that do an amazing job. Doesn't matter who it is, doesn't matter which, which sport it is. And, and make sure that we turn up to these events, come rain, come shine, whatever. And the rear underwriting getting close, it does rain, we hope it doesn't. Thank you.
Didn't stop people coming last time. Councillor Murphy?
Uh thank you mayor. I did note, mayor, that you did actually raise the National Saff Festival. That funding actually goes to Football Tasmania, it doesn't go to the Denpor Strikers. There is a funding agreement, uh there is an agreement in place that actually does require Football Tasmania to ensure that 25% of the funding that is given to them, which goes to Hova by the way, the 25% of that funding actually is committed to infrastructure spending at Valley Row. So I think we need to ensure the council officers are aware of that and that we would be requiring Football Tasmania to provide evidence of the fact that they are meeting those obligations under that agreement, which I think would be relevant, taking into consideration that that is community funding that comes from Devonport, which ends up in Football Tasmania's hands, not in the hands of the local sporting group. So again, I think this is where, yes, it's fantastic that the economic benefit that does come from that is significant and it's an event that is well worth hanging on to because the energy and buzz that, that particular event creates around, around the town at that particular point in time, around the city at that particular point in time is significant. And it does, it's up there, right up there with the Devonport Cup. And it really does highlight the fact that Devonport is becoming a bit of a, a known soccer town. And I think this is again, where, you know, the argument could be, if you look at the budget that was supplied to councillors in relation to making this decision around whether to underwrite the event or potentially provide $10,000 worth of funding for it, it could make a significant difference, taking into consideration, as the mayor has rightly pointed out, that volunteer hours that go into making these events happen is significant versus the particular costs and they are significant costs that the, the club would be incurring in relation to meeting the requirements from the media's perspective, in what they require for them to televise this particular match from Valley Row. The flung effect from that, I think everyone would be aware of what occurred last time, the, the amount of media traction that we, we gained from that in relation to, you know, showcasing Devonport on the national and now showcasing Devonport on the international stage. Again, I, I feel that there would be some benefit in, in council sort of providing that level of support financially to the club, even though we apply the logic that if they sell X amount of tickets, they make X amount of money, but that money, people need to realise that that money is reinvested into their infrastructure, which allows them to be able to be in the position that they're in. So I will leave it at that and we'll obviously go to the table and we'll make decisions from there. Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Agree against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.5 is the Denpor Youth Advisory Group Terms of Reference. So move.
So move.
Councillor, councillor?
Yeah, this is wonderful. One of the best things we've done in the last few months, I'm very excited by it. And I think councillor Sally Nellwell brought this up in the first instance as a notice of motion and just say that staff have really embraced this and go on forward with it. A few years back, I wondered if we could do this and we weren't able to, but now it's wonderful to see. Takes me back to when we had, when I was at Rees High, we had Danae and Lions as our patron for our youth council. Pretty impressive and a wonderful lady and a huge inspiration for us all. So I'd really like to see this up and running. I met a couple of committee members at our breakfast the other morning for council, which was really refreshing to see them there. And yeah, they're just breathy fresh air. And now that they're going to looking at putting on an event at the end of the year, which is exciting, so getting these terms of reference up and running is just a natural thing to do. And then we've got some guidelines that we need to follow and then we can utilise their vitality inspirations, whatever they need, and we can certainly ask them what their thoughts are going for, what are the fears that we're doing here, so it's great.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Uh thank you mayor. Yeah, it really is positive that, you know, young people have got a level of interest in local government and have put a significant amount of work into developing these terms of reference and this, the quality of them. It's important that, you know, community governance is a significant part of what local government does and, and it's really impressive that a young group of, of young people have gotten in behind us, so well done.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Councillor Velocott?
Thank you mayor. Look, I strongly support, well, obviously in terms of reference, but the formation of the youth group. The main thing here, of course, is that we take notice of what the ideas that they've come up with because that is what it's all about. We need for a living city to have something for everybody, for our age residents, for our young residents, for everybody. We need, for a living city, to have something for everybody, for our age residents, for our young residents, for everybody. And I believe that this time around years ago, we did have a youth group and it was quite exciting. But it sort of got lost a little bit with them having jobs after work and finding the time to be able to come into council to do what they wanted to do. However, this time I read in the notes that we have more principals and teachers on board, so I think that's the key to it. They've got to want to see it happen and they will work with their students. And I think it's a great thing for the city of Devonport. I look forward to watching from afar. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, look, I've had the opportunity to meet with this group and they are certainly a lovely bunch and very enthusiastic. I think they would meet every week if they had the opportunity. And I guess I should point out that they are meeting in their own time. It's not happening in school time. It's happening after school in their own time. And they're certainly, they're working hard on reading, I've got to say fast. So they're our future, so it's really important that we're mature and continue to have that role. So thank you, everyone. I'll ask Councillor John to comment.
Yes, and congratulations to Calwright and Erin Ford, our staff, who have facilitated this and go into the meetings and enabled the students, I want to say children, and they're certainly not. And I suppose I just can't wait to see what they're capable of doing and correct the council and their cop. We really need to take them seriously, don't just let it be a talk fest, let it be action after their words. And certainly take and respect what they've got to say, which is exactly why we're on the game. So, yeah, really looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item five point six is the election caretaker period policy. Do I have a moment?
Standards.
You have the, Councillor John, Councillor Lytham?
Yes, Mayor, pretty much a common sense approach to what is required moving forward. The letter from the Honourable Minister, Mr Nick Street, outlines that the state government didn't have time to formulate this as part of the legislative prior to the decision for compulsory elections. So it's just common sense that this needs to occur.
Thank you. Councillor John?
Yes, I certainly spoke to the general manager about this to understand. We kind of did this in the last couple of times I've been here in election time. We tend to go into a bit of slow-mo. We still govern and we still do what we have to do, but we don't make any major decisions and cause any brandstanding as such. And that's very sensible. Our councils do this caretaker policy. And the general manager's certainly researched those policies, looked at what was best to suit our council. And it only makes sense to me as well, and I certainly agree that that has to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Under any other comments? Councillor Ennis?
Thank you. Yes, Minister Street, obviously very busy and hasn't had time to consult, so I'm sure there'll be some of that.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll ask Councillor Murphy to comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Considering it hasn't been the job that long, I imagine he will do. And I think overwhelmingly the information provided by other councils will be that we pretty much do it anyway. We're just going to ensure that now we have the policy around it to ensure that it happens. So consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item five point seven is the A-scooter trial.
Standards move. Option two.
Thank you.
More discussion.
Councillor Murphy and Councillor John, option two. Councillor Lytham?
Thank you, Mayor. High-profile agenda right of this evening. There's a lot of evidence, it's a very detailed report, but we've been given around the pros, cons and benefits and pluses, et cetera, et cetera. But common sense needs to apply in relation to, in my opinion, why option two would best suit the Devonport community. I see there's an opportunity more than anything else when you look at other particular areas, with the exclusion of Burnie, obviously. But they do, the larger population centres, these trials have occurred in Launceston and Hobart. There has been a number of issues and I don't really want to compare us to Hobart, but if you start to look at us in Launceston, I was up there during a football carnival and the amount of purple rubbish that was seen hanging around the residential areas of Launceston was, I'm thinking to myself, well, if this is the way we're going to go, it's going to make the town pretty untidy. I think there's an opportunity though with these particular devices that we probably have some, you know, better than most, if not the best, shared pathways in the state. But what's along those shared pathways and accessibility to them? The coastal pathway is another example of the continuation of that or a part of what we have access to now. And I think these devices can provide the opportunity for visitors alike who come to Devonport to potentially take advantage of a different mode of transport. You know, hypothetically speaking, say from out here in our brand-new waterfront park area, to be able to access the shared pathways to go from the CBD district, you know, say to the Bluff or to Don River Rawa or Swordhurst Bridge and back, et cetera, et cetera, makes a point of difference. And then something where there's a little bit more control around where these particular, you know, devices, vehicles, whatever you'd like to call them, are located, but more importantly, where they'll be left. I think we can have a little bit more control around that. Hence the reason for option two. I think we have a fairly good public transport network in Devonport. So don't necessarily see the need in relation to providing the opportunity for these these vehicles and devices to actually die or dwell out into residential areas. I think Devonport's not that big. You can walk from one side of it to the other pretty quickly. So, yeah, so I'll throw it up for the rest of the table to debate.
Thank you, Councillor Murphy. Councillor John?
Thank you. Yeah, probably direct a question through you if I may to Mr Skirving, if that's all right. So we're going option three, which I thought was the most sensible choice if we're going to trial it. So I just want to highly understand what's said out there with people that might be listening, the ones that are doubting us about this system. We're not going to have it in residential and residential areas if we go over this option. But we're going to have it still in the CBD, but it's still going to have restrictions anyway on certain areas within the CBD as well. Or is that going to wait until we get to endorsing which company we talk to and then we can do that? I just want to understand exactly what this option three means. Yeah, I can see what it says. Thank you, Councillor Lytham. I appreciate that. Do you know? Mr Skirving, if you wouldn't mind, I just want to holistically say out loud what this actually means currently and then what it means going forward once we've chosen the company that we're in. Mr Skirving, if that's possible?
Through you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So the options before council aren't, don't elaborate on all the controls that are available to council, both in terms of the operating area generally, but also specific controls in specific geographical locations. So a requirement of expression of interest process would be for providers to be able to demonstrate that they can control the devices based on GPS location. In both of the trials that are underway currently in Hobart and Launceston, there are controls limiting use, as in no use at all within CBD locations or restricted use. So either just on footpath or speed limited, and that's dependent on, I guess, the density of those locations and the degree of activity. So all of those parameters would still need to be decided by council. The options we've put forward for council to consider under the range of recommendations is really controlling that overall operating area. Whether just the established recreational trial network or including the residential suburban areas.
Thank you. Now, that's all I'm asking for, to be said out loud. So we can get to the nuts and bolts when we get to that next step. Thank you. Obviously, I had a bit of fun in Hobart, not that I know of, with Councillor Alexia and the Deputy Mayor of Burnie. And we trialled the scooters down there, which was brilliant. It was good to know the company down there has had them there for quite a few months. And it was very interesting to see how much control these, people don't know about these A-scooters. They're not just press a button and go and go really fast. There are areas where the machine actually speaks to you, depending on the company that you work with. And it actually tells you you're about to go into a slow zone, which is really great. So, yes, there's going to be some crazy people or idiots on these machines and this controls that system. And it was really good to know. So as soon as we've got anything in the shops, on the footpaths in CBD, and I know that there has been, you know, good old Facebook and social media, people can see these terrible accidents that have occurred, regardless of the, we have car accidents all the time. It's terrible. But these scooters, you know, are a machine in your hand and you've got, you know, it depends on who's actually operating them, on how they're going to behave. But the great thing is there is restrictions that we can put on these companies and say to them, can you make sure that it goes slow in these areas? So we're looking after everybody. So I'm quite excited by the trial. I think it's going to be great for our area. I think everyone's embracing it. It's all, it's part of the future and it's part of what we're going to have to work with and start to understand. So thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Holst?
I'm going to support option two, but I wonder about, do these machines actually cut out if you go under residential area? Will they die? I don't know. I'm going to discuss that anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Eric?
Thanks, Mayor. Just as a matter of interest, second last word on my laptop and my copy says trials. And it says trials up there, which is the right word. Those different words do change the meaning of the sentence. So residential trails means our paths. So I just sort of make that point. I'm sure others picked it up as well. Look, I've seen the upside and the downside of these things, but I think we have nothing to lose by implementing a twelve-month trial. Not trial, trial. But I also think in that twelve-month trial, we need to have an exit clause if they become overly problematic. Like in three to six months, that's causing all sorts of problems out in the community. And it ends up that not enough people want it or council doesn't want it. They become a hazard, a major hazard, and we need to have that option, I think. If we can demonstrate that this is happening, that we can sever the ties with the trial. Because if we know six months in that we don't want to do this ever again and we've got another six months to go, we don't really want to be put in that position. So I just would like to have an exit clause of some description, a descriptive exit clause that would be in the twelve-month trial to protect council's interest and the community's interest, but we've got nothing to lose. It's going to be one of those, does the upside outweigh the downside and that will know within twelve months. So on that basis, I will support option two. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Alexia?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'll be supporting option two as well. I just want to make note that back in June twenty twenty-one, I did raise a notice of motion that we look at the viability of A-scooters at a workshop, which we did in September twenty twenty-one. So since then till now, we've come a long way, I think. And there's been quite a fervour of discussion from there till now, so it's taken quite a long time. We see other cities already in Tasmania that are already in use. I just want to raise just a couple of things. Yeah, this decision didn't come lightly for council. So we've debated it quite lengthy. It's been a slow process with Matthew Skirving to get to where we are now at this stage. I think we need to be flexible with the way this is going to work. Councillor John, I did mention that we did trial some of these electric scooters in Hobart. And we did notice that when we went into the municipality, the scooters did slow down, sort of like a walking pace. So that was a good, good incentive, I think.
Is that mainly with speeding before?
No. And we've got to accept the fact that these scooters are already going around the city, not the higher scooters. They'll be residents of Devonport using the scooters around the city as they are. Councillor Murphy raised a really good point. That was that if you use it on the local pathways, it's great for the tourists. So the tourists should be able to hop on a scooter and visit some of the amazing sights we have for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis?
Thank you. I understand that there would be quite a bit of resistance by people because it's a change and it's a big change. And people have seen all sorts of things happening in other places. But I think you need a trial in here and we can see how it fits with our city. And if it fits after the twelve months or so, it will be, it'll be good to go ahead. But like Councillor Perry said, you need to have that time to decide. And if us as a group decide later on, it's not practical, then we can withdraw. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments from me. I guess the difference between the higher ones and people's own scooters is that they will take them home, but they're not going to leave them on a corner of the street somewhere, someone to drive them. And the other thing, Councillor Alexia mentioned that it's taken us some time to get to this point. I would point out that between when we first started discussing it and now, there was state government legislation going into play that affected how, what construct, what restrictions we could do. And we needed to study that very carefully to make sure that we were working within those frames as well. So that's really all I've got to add. Councillor Murphy, I'll ask you a question.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, fellow councils, for your input in relation to that. And I suppose just to clarify, in relation to putting up option two, is that, you know, the technology exists where these devices or vehicles can be geocached specifically just to be operated on those shared pathways and those trails, not the trials, the trails. So as I said, I think the opportunities that exist for us to be able to provide an alternative mode of transport to potential visitors, I'm not too sure whether the uptake from residents of the community will be significant in relation to getting from point A to point B on them. But who knows? We've still got to be able to get to the, to the walking trails or the shared pathways to be able to utilise them. But the opportunity would be there if you were in the middle of town and you wanted to duck up to the Bluff. Well, you could sort of jump on an A-scooter, it would be quickly. So but more importantly, it's about not having them just littered around residential areas or we wouldn't then have to be concerned with, you know, rider and pedestrian collisions in the CBD because you might be able to operate in the CBD. Because we don't need them. People can see them walk around the CBD. You know, CBD isn't that big realistically. So I think, you know, another common sense approach. So I look forward to seeing what happens and if we get an operator who's willing to participate. Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six is information and item six point one is workshops and break concessions held since last council meeting.
Standards.
Councillor Murphy? Councillor Alexia, thank you. Councillor Murphy?
It's all in the report there, man. Just give me your decision.
And you, Councillor Alexia?
I think so, Madam Mayor.
Any comments, questions? I'll ask Councillor Lytham to comment.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point two is Mayor's monthly report.
You do, Mayor.
Second.
Councillor Lytham, Councillor Murphy, Councillor Lytham?
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed you attended an afternoon tea to celebrate Dame Anna's hundred and twenty-fifth birthday. Was that a really grand occasion? Was it a...?
I didn't wear my fur, but it was quite grand.
Right. So I'm sure Dame Anna would have been thrilled with that. Now, look, another busy month there for you and thank you for all the hard work that you gave us during the month.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. A very, very busy month for you as, you know, you tend to participate in each month. But a couple of, the Highfield Park was a really positive one. The, obviously, Sir Optimus seventieth anniversary. Fantastic that they've been going that long here in Devonport. And the opening of the C3 Church in Steer Street, that obviously was a good event as well.
Yeah, it's one of the perks of the job is you get to go to them and see all the great events across our city. And I also appreciate that too. Now I'm going to miss that stuff. Councilor Ennis.
Thank you. I might ask a question about the TASport. What, has there anything happened at the meeting there that you could sort of share with us a bit more about what's happening?
TASports. That was the breakfast.
Oh, wasn't?
Do you see the hybrid?
Yeah, that was the breakfast, the chamber hosted, when they gathered up back to see the businesses.
It was good.
It was a very, um, worthwhile day. Any questions, comments? Councilor McCall, do you close? Thank you.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point three is the General Manager's Report. Do I have to move it, please?
Salute. Second.
Councilor Perry, thank you. Councilor Murphy.
Thanks, Mayor. Again, detailed reports. Worth noting that I have received some feedback in relation to the General Manager's attendance at the Master Billers Association and how positive that was received in relation to the direction of our community. So well done to the GM in attending that. And, you know, continuing, continuation of positivity around our city.
Councilor, thank you. Councilor Murphy, Councilor Perry.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a question on one item there, item 1.4 under Council Management. General Manager, we met with Bill Wilson, the National President of Sister Cities, and Councilor Peter Holster discussed a potential future conference in Devonport. Was that after the workshop or before? Or so nothing's transpired since? Okay, thank you. That's all, thanks, Mayor.
Councilor Jarman. Thank you.
A busy month. Just a couple of questions. I just noted that we've got, sorry, I'm just remembering everything when I did watch it. TASwater have got concerns while we're in, can't take a mode about their AGM. So we'd still get all the information from you. I will still be able to ask any questions about what's going on there. We're just going to have yourself representing us as it gets to that, correct? Is that how? It's just interesting, what am I worried about? If they won't take a call. Because it's something that won't be presented by. It's on a time, their AGM happens. They put it off by a couple of weeks.
Yeah, through you. Yeah, through you, Mayor. I'm just concerned, they made a recommendation across the state that should the owner's rep and the proxy not be re-elected, there could be a window there where they'll need to do some business and get their annual report endorsed by reps, which they're required to do under their rules. And they're concerned that there could be a period there where councils may not have yet met and elected new reps. So to cover off on that, they suggest that we, the election councils make the general manager their proxy.
Yes, understood.
Should the mayor still be available, should have him before the election?
They couldn't have put it off by a week or whatever.
I understand that they're, under the rules, it's a very short. We now know, yeah, they were concerned that they would have, they may slip outside that timeframe if, yeah.
No problem. And look, I suppose I'd just like to, and nothing to do, any connections in the room at all? But it was just interesting to see that we've now, we've had two board of directors have to bail out due to stipulations, which is Jeff McNamara and Grant Atkins. And I just want to pass on the great job they've done because Dalton is incredible. And now that we've got a new CEO starting as well, which will be good, we've had a great CEO as well. And, and look, I just want to point that out. It kind of goes a bit over the round and we missed that. And I certainly just wanted to point that out that it's something to be acknowledged. How, I'm really impressed of what, how it's developed in the 10 years I've been around, living as I've been around. And it's certainly formidable what they've achieved in the last 10, 11 years, let alone when it started and where it's come to. It's been a very, very good team. So I hope this keeps continuing that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Holster.
Just going back to 1.4 about the Australian Sister Cities Conference future. In the element of timelines, the committee decided that they just do an AGM by Zoom. So.
Good to have that information, thank you. Councilor Perry, do you have a question?
I didn't.
Thank you. Um, yeah, Councilor, please.
Thank you. Just to the General Manager, for most of us, things have gone fairly quiet and about Hillcrest and what's going on there. I noticed you attended a recovery committee meeting. Is there anything you can share with us about how it's all going? Yeah, through you, Mayor. I'll probably expand on it a bit further at the next workshop, but really looking at how the community will recognise the anniversary sort of focus at this point.
Are there any other comments, questions?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Oh, sorry, Councilor Exley.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Just a question to the General Manager regarding the Meacroft aged care facility expansion. Are they looking at expanding where they can't be out of situable, do you mind?
Yes, through you, Mayor. They are looking for options, I guess, on where they can increase their footprint. And because they are quite constrained. They talked about part of North Street potentially. There is, had some concerns with that, which we talked through. And also suggested a few other options that they've gone away to progress. So I think it's been a, it's been a long way to go with that. Just an initial meeting and should it, you know, start to develop, we'll probably ask them to come along to a council workshop and talk through their ideas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? I'll ask Councilor Murphy to close.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to follow on from Councilor Jarman's comment in relation to Dalton. Yeah, Matt Gresky is the, the exiting CEO, has done over the last 10 years a fantastic job. And, you know, council's been the financial benefactor of the hard work that he's put in over that period of time. Which Veronica Schilling, all the best in that new role. And there's just some big boots to fill. But outside of that, consider it closed, Dan.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point four is the Highfield Park Master Plan 2018, 2018, new four update.
Salute. Second.
Councilor Holster and Councilor Murphy. Councilor Holster.
Yes, I would love to be upgraded. Highfield Park, the facilities, and it was sort of the Premier was there to announce further funding to actually put in the skate park. So development's going on very well.
Thank you. Councilor.
Yes, Mayor, it seems we were ticking all the boxes in relation to this one. So, yeah, not much further than there.
Thank you. Councilor.
Thank you. And these couple of things has already been seen. But I think it's fantastic that we are progressing this plan for the simple reason this, there's a lot of children in this area that don't have transport to go elsewhere. I was absolutely thrilled with the Premier's announcement of funding towards a skate park. And well done to the working group that came up with part of the plan for this. And of course, to our staff, Nigel Williams and of course, Matt Skirving. This is an area that has needed this for many, many years. And I look forward to seeing further development in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Jarman.
To be honest, three, four years ago, I didn't know where Highfield Park was. And a lot of people didn't. You can't drive to it with a car, it is accessible only through walking to it, through the laneways up off Morris Avenue. And a bit embarrassing to not realise, and I suppose that just is the case. What's, it's just been a hipper little gym. And what the staff have done and where they've come from and where the gong is, is just lovely. And again, it shows a respect for the people living in that area. And it just makes sense. So, yeah, really, really pleased with how it's coming along. I can't wait to see if it finishes.
Thank you. Any other comments? It's been great to work with particularly Community House and how they've brought people together to formulate the plan when we started and then to like to support what's been happening and continue to do that. So we're with our house. Councilor Holster, to close.
It's good to see that there are so many children actually using this park. Some of our other parks around town don't get the use of this one, obviously does. So just congratulate anybody that's involved. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point five is a report on the cemetery strategy, new living updates.
Salute.
Councilor Murphy, do you want a second?
Very good.
Councilor Holster, thank you. Councilor.
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, well and truly over the halfway point in relation to what's occurred within this particular strategy. And it's a credit to the progress that's been made over that period of time. Obviously, the next eight years will go relatively quickly and there's still a little more to be done.
Councilor Holster.
Yes, it's good to see that the development of the cemetery, the staff and workers are obviously doing a very good job. Very well presented, coming further away.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? No? I'll ask Councilor Murphy to close, you're right.
Consider it closed, Dan.
I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point six is General Management, Detective Finance and Corporations Service, Corporate Services Report from Major June. Do you have a minute, please?
Salute. Second.
That's the challenge of Councilor Murphy. Councilor Jarman.
Yes, sorry, please bear with me, I'm trying to go page sixty two. I'm trying to go to page sixty two. Oh, oh, I'm here. Okay, thank you. Yes, as always, a very interesting report, always to read every time it comes up to us at Leagues. And I just was fascinated to see that it's just proving a point that our Mobbie Story Park, Park is doing very, very well. Which just proves a point, people are starting to utilise it better. And I suppose it's just showing that it's certainly making up for all the changes that we have made. And I like, it's full so many times when I go past. And if it's not full, it's at 60% capacity. And certainly at night now, we've got a lot more things going on in Martha's Square, Vivian. It's almost full to the brink and people are starting to park in Aldridge Street and outlying areas because we're just becoming a bit of a hub dance here that's working really well. So that's just good to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Murphy, is the second?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yes, yet again, very detailed report. There was one there just in relation to the use of our common seal around Grand D for the Crown in Right in relation to the little sound and light show. Is that just, it's 26th of the fifth, 2022? Is that just in relation to receiving that grant or, yeah, okay. Fantastic. That's it. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I'll ask Councilor Jarman to close, you're right.
Oh, let's consider that posed.
I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point seven, Mr Convention Arts, sent a report from Major June. Do you have a move, please?
Salute.
Uh, Councilor Jarman. Councilor, Councilor Jarman.
Thank you. Here's some wonderful events, of course, happening in our arts precinct. And just wanted to point out, Paper on Skin, what an incredible event. I'm sorry, I couldn't make it to the big event, the one night. But I was happy to go to the Sir Optimus celebration of the RBC. The artefacts as such, I mean, they're pieces of art. They're not just mordant items. They were just incredible. All I want to do is touch them. I know you're not there too. Very tactile person. It's just incredible. And to hear all the work that's involved in perhaps, you know, just one item arriving from Japan and how to unfold it and get it out of the actual parcels and then put it together to create this wonderful masterpiece. And there were so many items there to look at. It was just amazing. And thank you to showing how councils can do resource sharing. It was always a Bernie event. Bernie have kind of shared the love and allowed us to create the event here. It's been wonderful. So that's what, it was just brilliant talking again to our counterparts up in Bernie. And they were just really impressed with our function centre here and being able to put it on down here as well. So I think we've proved the point that councils can share resources very, very well and do things together. And I love the fact that we can. And also, I just must mention very quickly, I went to an exhibition the other night and it was just so lovely. We had photos of the mob service stations. And there was not a argument for a robust discussion about where it was and because it's old photos and where it could be. And it was just fascinating to see people having all those old memories coming out and talking about these things. And that's what art's all about, is making people talk. So I'm very proud to see these different exhibits that we've put on so well. And congratulations to all the staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Murphy, is the second?
Thank you, Mayor. It's a hard act to follow that one. But, but I think, I think Council Jarman was spot on there. And that was a significant event and a significant coup for Devonport in relation to getting paper on skin down here with the, how things were happening in Bernie and where they're taking their, their cultural perspective. But anyway, I won't go there. Ring of Fire, how good is that? And they're at it again. So congra, look, 2,216 people. That is a massive number when you look at anything else that's been held there over that particular month. And the fact that they're coming back for another two nights is, look out at the end of August. It's, you know, we are really becoming a bit of a cultural hub. So congratulations to them. Cheers.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions?
Yes, sorry, Mayor. Yes, just as a reminder, of course, Councilor Murphy's just mentioned the cultural hub. That will be having a lot of good jazz in the convention area over the weekend. Thank you.
Well, reminder, thank you.
Just a reminder, that's all.
Um, Councilor Jarman, to close, you're right.
Thank you. Yes, so if, Mr Jarman, remember, because of COVID, they unfortunately had to cancel a couple of performances. Some people should go and say that. It was rude, so I'd love to go and say it again. Yes, thank you. Closed.
I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please say aye. Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point, where am I? It's fine. Is it lying? Yes, the Community Services Report from Major June. Do I have a move?
Salute.
Councilor Murphy, do you want a second?
I'm moved.
Councilor Holster, thank you. Councilor Murphy.
Yes, a lot going on yet again, Mayor. It's all there in the report for everyone to see.
Thank you. Councilor Holster.
Yes, they're taking from the Community Services, they do a good job of handling development and sustainability, recreation, events and marketing, but a fair amount of coverage. And they do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilor McCall.
I noticed your photo with the citizenship ceremony. I'm just wondering, up at the top of the heap, if you can answer the question of how many new citizens we would have had so far this year that you would have done this ceremony? Just a quick point, if you go.
Well, we're at forty-two or something, so maybe ninety.
That's excellent.
Three more, six, seven, I think. That might be other state.
Well, that's fine.
Maybe seventy. I'd have to go back. I've noticed, Councilor McCall.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that's a really good number considering the size of our city that people want to come from different areas and become Australian citizens and settle in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? I'll ask Councilor Murphy to close.
Consider it closed, Mayor.
I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point nine is the election room's expense report to the, to June. Do you have to move the case?
Stay moved.
Stay moved.
Councillor Murphy, councillor Exley, councillor Murphy?
It's all detailed in the report for everyone to see, man.
Thank you. Councillor Exley?
I think further ado, my name.
Any comments, questions? I'll ask councillor Murphy to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six point ten is unconfirmation of the audit panel meeting. Do you have to move it, please?
Stay moved.
Councillor Murphy, councillor?
I'll change it.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Uh, it's all detailed in the report, Mayor. There is, um, again, a, a successful completion of our auditing processes.
Thank you. Councillor Perry?
Yeah, I concur with, um, councillor Murphy's point of view that those meetings have become much smoother over the four years that, that I've been on that panel. Um, it's credit to council staff preparing the reports in, in the way that they do. And that we have the answers to every question that, um, we may get asked and do get asked. Uh, yeah, that's, that's credit to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other, any comments, questions? I'll ask councillor Murphy to close the debate.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I, I hardly agree with councillor Perry. Um, you know, sitting there as an independent member of that particular panel, um, there is a lot involved and, and the fact that the process runs relatively smoothly and the fact that we're able to achieve the results that we have, uh, are credit to the team.
Thank you. I will put the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item seven is section 23 committee meeting reports, and we have been saying it twice since our last meeting. And that brings us to the end of our open section of, uh, this meeting. And I would ask for a move or for us to move into closed session.
Stay moved.
Councillor Murphy, second. Councillor McCall, any comments, councillor Murphy?
Uh, nothing further, man. Begin the procedural.
Nothing to add, Mayor.
In the council, I'll put the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. And that brings us to a pause at the open section at 6:41. Thank you to those in the public gallery who attended the session.